Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Oh, alright. I thought I was talking to myself for a minute. How's everybody doing today? Awesome, awesome. Alright, we're gonna start. The members will take their seat now and the visitors and guests retire behind the rail. We will start our meeting today. Thank you very much. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Marshall Mitchell of Salem Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Green. I would ask all guests, members, and visitors to please rise.
Let us pray. Merciful and eternal God, who has given us life and liberty and this day, we thank thee for waking us up this morning and starting us on our way. We pray now, oh God, that your presence would hover over this council, that in this place we would know your peace, we would feel your wisdom, and we would know why we have been sent to come this way. We pray a special prayer over the city of Philadelphia for all of its children and its seniors and all of its residents. We pray even now, oh God, as we pursue Amazonian-sized winds, that we still look and see the needs of little children and of aging seniors. Grant us wisdom, grant us peace, grant us your mercy. It is in thy holy and sovereign name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor for those inspiring words. Council be at ease. Thank you very much. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 15, 2018, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 15, 2018 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in propriety, second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 15, 2018 stand approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absences.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you coming down. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution honoring Philadelphia's living legends. With George Beach and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Green, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
February is African-American History Month. You can take a global perspective and look at how we've had contributions throughout the world that have emanated from the African-American population here in this country. You can do a statewide look at what impacts our community leaders, civic leaders, from our community have had statewide. Or you can just look out the window and look at Philadelphia and see the contributions, both big and small, the leadership that came before us that are still here and some that have gone on and passed away, um, have had made. Today, we come to honor those both living and those who have transitioned on. People that I, as I get older, actually knew and made a, made a contribution in my life. Whether we talk about George Beach, Joey Temple, Rita R. Smith Wade L., Valerie Bullock, or some that have passed on, like Vernon Marks, affectionately known as Pop Pop, Charlie Boo Burris, Abdul Malik Mohammed, Carl Moore Baby, Moore, and Joe Falk, as part of our fabric of the Philadelphia community. The first protests I ever had, and I actually did go to some protests.
I believe.
Charlie Boo Burris and others, um, people like actually, um, Milton Street told two young guys from high school, and I was, matter of fact, I was a freshman in high school, not to give my age away. So, um, there was a police officer for civil affairs named Fensel. Many of you won't, I heard some people heard of Fensel. He was a gentleman police officer, but he played no games. And when it was time to move, it was time to move. And he would, I remember being up close and personal with these members of the community, Georgie Woods and David P. Richardson and others, and they were making their statement, they were fighting for right causes. It could have been the gallery, and we were out there, and I remember Fensel coming over and saying, "Now, you went around seven times around this building now. I have to do my job just like you're doing yours." So some people gonna go to jail today. And that was the time when those leaders looked back at young people that had their life ahead of them, people that, that did not want to have marks on their record, and say, "It's time for you to go home. Time for you to get up out of here. It's time for us to take on the, the mantle of that part of this demonstration." And I never forgot that. Charlie Boo Burris, if you knew him, charismatic and, um, interesting character, came into the office of Housing and Community Development. They squatted in more houses, people who own houses today owe those actions to him because they said, "Well, why are these houses vacant when people need them?" And stepped up to the plate and took over buildings. I remember taking over the, uh, office of Housing and Community Development, and I, and he came in with such furor, such intensity. I got scared. I said, "You ain't really mad, are you?" He's like, "Yeah, I'm mad, but not mad at you." So those are the kinds of things I remember. Malik Mohammed on Lancaster Avenue taught me a great many things, not only about religion, but about being in business and having to make a payroll and having, having to pray yourself last and having to look out for others before you looked out for yourselves. So all of these things, when you hear me and others in here talk, you're hearing their voices. You're hearing Georgie Woods and others, and, um, Joey Temple probably has the best collection of some of the, and I wish he would share it sometime, of what Georgie's old shows were. So, without further ado, um, we are honoring the living legends today, honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia living, living legends such as George Albert Beach, Joey Temple, Rita Smith Wade L., and Valerie Bullock, who are leaders in the areas of civil rights, community activism, education, business, youth mentorship in Phila-, in the Philadelphia area, and further honoring those legends who are no longer with us. Vernon Pop Pop Marks, Charlie Boo Burris, Abdul Malik Mohammed, Carl Moore Baby Moore, and Joe Falk, as parts of the commemoration of Black History Month. Whereas George Albert Beach is the founder of Beach Advertising, which was one of the oldest minority-owned advertising agencies in the state of Pennsylvania. For more than four decades, Beach Company has been an advertising agency of choice for many local and national corporations, nonprofit organizations, such as and including Hershey's Foods, Campbell Soup Company, and the Philadelphia Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mr. Beach is the recipient of numerous awards, including Addy, uh, Neo-Graphics, I don't know that, you'll explain what that is, and Art Directors Club Award, and the Best of the Category Awards in Printing Industry of America. Beach is revered by paving the way for many African-Americans to learn the fundamentals, skills, and strategies of navigating the communications field, and...
Whereas Joey Temple is a radio producer and lifelong resident of Philadelphia. Temple's career in radio began when he received an opportunity to volunteer with Mattie Humphrey at WDAS. During his internship, he participated in the breakfast show and provided knowledge to the community about mass incarceration. After the completion of his internship, Joey Temple stayed at WDAS to work with the legendary Georgie Woods. Currently, Joey T. produces, quote, "A message of music," end of quote, which airs 96.1 AM on Fridays, and quote, "The Electric Magazine Show," end of quote, for 900 AM on Saturdays. Joey Temple spends his time outside of the radio station, being active in his community and working to prevent youth from engaging in a life of crime, and...
Whereas Rita R. Smith Wade L. is a professor of psychology and African-American studies at Millersville University of Pennsylvania. Dr. Smith received her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from Columbia University, and her Master of Arts and Doctorate of Philosophy in Psychology from the University of Pennsylvania. In addition to being a dedicated professor who supports the future success of younger generations, Dr. Smith is also an activist, organizer, breast cancer survivor, and the Vice President of the Lancaster Chapter of the NAACP, and...
Whereas Valeria Bullock is a former senior business analyst for PICO, who was responsible for managing the company's low-income usage reduction program. Early in her career at PICO, Bullock implemented a solar water heating pilot program that targeted low-income residential customers with solar technology. Bullock's work at PICO brought national attention to the importance of usage reduction programs and a benefit to low-income residential utility customers. Bullock is a recipient of the Philadelphia Visionary Award and the Award for Excellence given by Pennsylvania Legal Services. Her work has also been recognized by the American Council for Energy, Efficiency, and Economy and the Former National Fuel Fund Network, and...
Whereas the Vernon Marks was the longtime chairman of Philadelphia's Vacant Property Review Committee. Notably, Marks was the first African-American bail bondsman in the city of Philadelphia and one of the founders of the Strawberry Mansion Citizens Participation Council. Marks was the champion of this community in a big way and was an active leader and organizer in Philadelphia's civil rights struggle. Marks was known by many as the mayor of North Philadelphia, and...
And before I give remarks on Charlie Boo Burris, I just wanted to say Councilman Jones had no idea of this when he assigned me this reading assignment, but Charlie Boo Burris was my neighbor for a brief moment. In North Philadelphia, he lived on a 3200 block of North New Kirk Street, so it's really, um, special to me to be able to read this today. Whereas Charlie Boo Burris was a lifelong resident of the Manchus section of Philadelphia, Burris can be described by those who knew him as a unique individual that was fully committed to the success of his community. Burris's particular focus was supporting and helping Philadelphia's youth. Burris worked around the clock to ensure that youth stayed away from negative encounters, pushing them to move forward in a positive direction. Burris was on the forefront of trying to reduce gang activity throughout the city through his work with the Crisis Intervention Network, where he was a member of the Field Organizations Team, Operations Team. Burris also founded the Inner City Organizing Network, Icon, a nonprofit that aided young men by using their skills to renovate homes, and...
Whereas Abdul Malik Mohammed was a longtime resident, community leader, and entrepreneur from West Philadelphia. In 1986, Mohammed founded the Lancaster Avenue Business Association, which bridged the gap between the businesses from 34th Street all the way out to 63rd Street. Mohammed provided firm leadership to the corridor and showed direct support for unification and teamwork strategies to a diverse business community. Several of the services Mohammed worked continually to maintain were sanitation and cleanup services, creating an area town watch for security on the corridor, and a zero-tolerance graffiti policy. With support from membership participation, Mohammed created programs that prompted change implemented towards the revitalization of Lancaster Avenue through community, social, and economic development, and...
Whereas Carl Moore was a community activist from South Philadelphia, whose primary mission was advocating for affordable and accessible community health care. In 1970, Carl Moore founded the Greater Philadelphia Health Action Incorporated. Greater Philadelphia Health Action Incorporated was one of the first medical managed care programs in the city of Philadelphia. Over 45 years after Moore started on his mission, residents of South Philadelphia and community stakeholders, including myself, celebrate the opening of the Carl Moore Health Center at 1401 South 31st Street, which is a state-of-the-art facility. The facility specializes in providing primary care, OB-GYN, podiatry, dental, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to the community and at an affordable cost.
And whereas Joe Falk was a well-respected community leader, always looking out for the underdog, Falk helped with various projects aimed at enhancing the quality of life of young people in his community. Falk's greatest accomplishments and achievements were in the Nice Town and Tioga neighborhoods. Falk served as a dedicated committee person for the 51st Ward. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and celebrates Philadelphia's living legends, George Albert Beach, Joey Temple, Rita R. Smith Wade L., and Valeria Bullock, who are leaders in the areas of civil rights, community activism, education, business, and youth mentorship in the Philadelphia area, and further honors those legends who are no longer with us. Vernon Marks, Charlie Boo Burris, Abdul Malik Mohammed, Carl Moore, and Joe Falk, as part of the commemoration of Black History Month. And further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Philadelphia's living legends and the families of our lost legends as further evidence of the sincere appreciation and gratitude of this legislative body.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Beach for remarks.
Thank you very much. Giving honor to God, Council President, Councilpersons, honored guests who are in this room today. Being a living legend is a responsibility that I've found, that I've had to bear the brunt of. I enjoy my life thus far, and I've been encouraged by the opportunities that were presented to me in the great city of Philadelphia. Philadelphia was a, a proving ground for opportunities in business, particularly opportunities for minority individuals who were not factored in in the early planning of businesses for this great city. But, lo and behold, I had an opportunity on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to do business in the great city of Philadelphia. And why was I able to do business in the city of Philadelphia? Because I had great people surrounding me and great people who were interns, particularly minority individuals, who had an opportunity to see firsthand how it was done, because that was my primary goal, to get it done, get it done right, and have, uh, something that was very special to me that I learned early in life, the oohs and the ahs. The oohs were over here and the ahs were over there. And it was from the work that I did as a youngster in art that I got the oohs and the ahs, and I still get them today. Can I hear an oohs over here and some ahs over there? Thank you very much. That is what has propelled me, and I know it has propelled those that are surrounding me today. And I look at some of the individuals that came to Beach, and some of them have stepped away proudly and have said, "I cut my teeth at Beach." And I'm so proud of them because my job is to make an opportunity available for those that are coming behind me and those that are along with me. And it's so great when you see other people doing great things. I'm inspired by others. I look out, I see out, and I try to step in the shoes of others, and that was what that's made my firm very successful, because I stepped out of me and became them, and I learned how to market in their behalf. So I want to say to the group that's here, congratulations on all that you have done and all that you and your family members have done in order to move business in the great city of Philadelphia to where it is now and to where it will be in the future, which is in the next five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council will be at ease, and as we do that, I would like to take a moment to recognize one of my awesome friends, uh, former State Senator Shirley Kitchen. I didn't see you back there. She is the living legend of all legends. Alright, thank you. Council be at ease. Councilman Jones?
Yes. Will all members come up on the high rise? Family members, stay where you are, and we'll take the picture.
Thank you, and congratulations. A little quiet, please, as you leave. I ask you, please, keep your voices down. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla, who will present a resolution congratulating Carla Moss. Will Carla Moss and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Squilla, we have Councilman Green and Councilman Johnson. Thank you. Can we have quiet, please?
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and...
Good morning, everyone, and I just want to say that, to me today, it's an honor to be able to have a resolution here in council to someone who was able to help everybody. And Carla was a person that, no matter who called her, what time of day, she would always be able to respond and never said no. And so this is just a small thing that we could do here in council, to be able to honor her for all her dedication and work she has given to us here in the city of Philadelphia. So today, we are congratulating and honoring Carla Moss for her years of dedicated service to the residents of Philadelphia on the occasion of her retirement from the City of Philadelphia Commissioner's Office. Whereas Carla is retiring after serving the residents of Philadelphia since 2004, she was promoted to Deputy City Commissioner in 2008, and her responsibilities included registering voters, assisting potential candidates with the election process, and where Carla was born in South Philadelphia to Dolores and Joe Capizoli, and has two siblings, Richard and Gina. Carla's father, John Capizoli, was a POW during World War II. And where Carla is always called "South Philadelphia Home" has vowed to never leave except for vacations to her trips upstate to the mountains and down the shore to everyone in Philadelphia's favorite vacation spots, Wildwood, New Jersey.
And I just want to take a personal moment and thank Carla for just being one of my mentors who watched me through this process as I started off as a young buck getting involved in electoral politics. I just want to personally thank you and Butch for being there for me. Whereas Carla met and married Billy Butch Moss, a fellow lifetime South Philadelphia resident who was born at the Naval Hospital. They have been married for 47 blissful years. Together, they have two sons, Jason and Michael, and two beautiful grandchildren, eight-year-old Paige and one-year-old Michael, with whom Carla and Butch look forward to spending more time. And whereas Carla and Butch plan on enjoying some of their favorite pastimes, such as spending time down the shore and up the mountains, delighting in the great outdoors, fishing and traveling to their other favorite spot, Key West, Florida. And I also want to thank Carla for all the work you've done for the City Commissioners and for the city of Philadelphia. Whereas most importantly, Carla will now have more time to devote to her favorite hobby, spending money. Those who know Carla will refer to her as the professional shopper, and we understand that she is very, very good at her hobby. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby congratulate and honor Carla Moss on the occasion of her retirement from the City of Philadelphia Commissioner's Office, and we wish her well in her future endeavors. Further resolved, then en gross copy of this resolution be presented to Carla Moss, further evidencing the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Carla Moss. Awesome. You got to give us your cell number. We're still going to call you for advice.
I want to thank council for recognizing me. I have many friends here. Hope that they stay friends once I leave. This is hard. I can't do this. You know, the Commissioner's Office was my work. I loved it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carla. And that's the first time she has lost for words.
Councilor B. D. Thank you very much and congratulations. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Council President and colleagues, I'm honored to have two important guests here today, John Lacoia and Jonathan Semel from the Masai Tribe of Kenya, accompanied by Corey Carter, Sr. I'd like you to please stand.
Welcome.
These men are visiting Philadelphia for the first time. Their goal is to raise awareness and funds for issues faced in Kenya, such as inadequate drinking water, forced marriages for young girls age 13, and female genital mutilation. Each year, representatives from the Masai Tribe visit the U.S. to raise awareness and teach people about Kenyan culture. In the coming weeks, my office will be organizing a fundraiser to support the Masai Tribe with their mission, and look forward to everyone's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today. Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Club. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hallmark Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, Bill numbers 180009 and 180014. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving a Second Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Manuela area identified by house number and street address as 3509 Heverford Avenue, including 3502 Mount Vernon Street. And a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Manuela area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3300 through 08, 3310, 3312, 3314, 3316, Mantua Avenue, 701, 703, 705, 707, 709 through 711, North 34th Street. And a resolution approving the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Greenwich Redevelopment Area identified by house number and street address as 522 Mercy Street. And a resolution confirming the appointment of Marcel S. Pratt Esquire as City Solicitor. And an ordinance amending Section 2 of an Ordinance, Bill Number 140902, approved March 4, 2015, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Numbers 224 and 232 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Kayuga Street from Whittaker Avenue to its terminus eastwardly therefrom, and reserving and placing on the City Plan a right of way for sewer and drainage purposes by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein," all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
This morning, I offered one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 17104 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Prerequisites to the Execution of City Contracts" by requiring contractors seeking to do business with the city to disclose certain demographic information regarding individuals serving as board members and executive officers.
Report to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the Community College of Philadelphia and its Office of Diversity and Equity for the creation of the Diversity Certificate Program.
And that will be on today's final pass calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce four resolutions, one of which is privileged and one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Bicycle Lanes" by requiring authorization to make modifications to existing bicycle lanes.
Report to committee.
And a privilege resolution honoring and recognizing February 2018 as Career and Technical Education CTE Month in the city of Philadelphia.
That will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Manuela area identified by house number and street address as 3509 Heverford Avenue, including 3502 Mount Vernon Street.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban Manuela area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3300 through 08, 3310, 3312, 3314, 3316, Mantua Avenue, 701, 703, 705, 707, 709 through 711, North 34th Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Philadelphia without consideration. These convey conditional fees simple titled "The City Owns Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements Iran," situated in the 44th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Hena.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer two resolutions, one signed by all members of council and one on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Sister Mary Scullion as the Grand Marshal of the 248th Annual Philadelphia St. Patrick's Day Parade.
That will be on this week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the appointment of Marcel S. Pratt Esquire as City Solicitor.
And that will be referred to committee. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One bill, one non-privileged and one privileged resolution. The non-privilege is particularly signed by Councilwoman Bass and Councilman Green.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 14500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Overlayed Zoning Districts."
Report to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Overbrook High School basketball star Asia Abram for her outstanding achievements on the Overbrook Girls Basketball Team and for her scoring her 1,000th career point in a game on January 29, 2018.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. These convey conditional fees simple titled "The City Owns Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements Iran," situated in the 38th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution signed by all members of council. I would like to speak on the resolution, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings examining racial disparities in home lending, also known as modern-day redlining in the city of Philadelphia.
And the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Council President and colleagues, equitable and inclusive housing policy has been a priority for me since I arrived in this body in 2012. As a young man, I decided to become a public servant, because I wanted to take on the injustices that I saw in the world, and particularly my own community. This week, I have seen a sickening, unacceptable, but most importantly, un-American injustice. When we talk about segregation, we are usually talking about the Jim Crow era, separate schools, separate churches, separate water fountains, and we sometimes give into the myth that the Civil Rights Movement has relegated racial segregation to the darker days of American history. But here we are, on the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, and deep segregation is alive and kicking. It is a legacy of federally sanctioned redlining policies that designated black neighborhoods as credit risk for home loans. Home ownership, which is commonly considered the cornerstone of the American dream, is to some an American nightmare. But earlier this week, we got a powerful proof of modern-day redlining. The Center for Investigative Reporting released an in-depth report that took a year of intensive research, including review of 31 million documents. They found that banks were denying home purchase loans, home improvement loans, and home refinancing to applicants of color at far higher rates than to their Caucasian applicants. In Philadelphia, black loan home applicants were 2.7 times more likely to be denied than their Caucasian applicants. Wide disparity persisted when the researchers controlled for nine factors, including income, loan amount, and geographic location. One powerful example is my own childhood neighborhood of Point Breeze, where I grew up and I'm currently raising my family. Between 2012 and 2016, white home loan applicants were granted 806 loans out of 958 applications and 84% success rate. However, for African-Americans, home loan applicants were granted 275 loans from 746 applications, a 37% success rate. This is not right, and I'm going to work with my colleagues to get to the bottom of it. Next month, I'll be holding hearings to get a grip on the root causes of this problem, and most importantly, hold those accountable, and the banking and mortgage industry accountable as to how they go about their loan application processes to those who live here in the city of Philadelphia. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "The time is always right to do the right thing, and now is that time." Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, and that will be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 2 of an Ordinance, Bill Number 140902, approved March 4, 2015, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Numbers 224 and 232 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Kayuga Street from Whittaker Avenue to its terminus eastwardly therefrom."
And that will be referred to committee. And Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution urging the United States Commerce Secretary, Wilbur Ross, to adopt the recommendations of the U.S. Conference of Mayors.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills, and I wish to be recognized after the titles of the bills are read in order to speak on one of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Adams Avenue, Tabor Avenue, Harrison Street, Whittaker Avenue, Roosevelt Boulevard, Bingham Street, East Alney Avenue, North Front Street, Nidro Avenue, Hammond Avenue, and Crescentville Road. And an ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Real Estate Taxes Regarding Terms of Payment Agreements," all under certain terms and conditions. Taxes" regarding terms of payment agreements, all under certain terms and conditions.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last bill that the chief clerk read is a very simple but very necessary piece of legislation regarding real estate payment agreements in the City of Philadelphia and specifically owner-occupied payment agreements that we refer to as UPAs for short. Just last week, the City of Philadelphia's Department of Revenue Regulations went into effect, and if we were to turn to page 15 of these regulations, it clearly states that a taxpayer who is compliant with a payment agreement shall be deemed not in default on his or her real estate taxes. Now, this was an important and an exceedingly necessary change to the regulations, and I want to commend our Department of Revenue for making it. However, it is the intent of this legislation to see a commensurate change made to the Philadelphia Code. As a member of this body representing the Ninth District, which we know from past hearings is comprised of 94% of what is referenced as middle neighborhoods, those are communities that can go boom or go bust, I know all too well the scourge that reverse mortgages have had on certain neighborhoods in the City of Philadelphia. And in light of Councilman Johnson's recent comments regarding his hearing, Councilman, I will tell you, we have had no problems with the approval of reverse mortgages in the City of Philadelphia, especially in neighborhoods where there's a high rate of homeownership. In addition to that, I want to note that it is quite common for reverse mortgage lenders to swoop in and pay off any remaining real estate tax balance for homeowners even if they are already in a payment plan, and then they use this as an impetus to foreclose on those homeowners. Now, while the Department of Revenue's regulations will now protect against this, we wanted to have something even stronger. I am proud to note for the record that our friends in the housing advocacy world, specifically the folks at Community Legal Services who represent these individuals in court whose homes have been unfairly foreclosed upon, they made the argument, and I agree, that while the new regulations are important, putting commensurate language in the code would give homeowners a statutory basis to legally state that so long as they are in a payment agreement and compliant with it, their real estate taxes are in effect not delinquent. So it is my hope that these new regulations, along with this bill that was introduced, will finally put an end to some of the more unscrupulous practices that we have seen relative to reverse mortgages. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and those two bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Good morning, Council President. Colleagues, I have one bill today, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Green, Squilla, Tobinberger, Heenan, O, Johnson, O'Neil, and Kim.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Section 19, 1806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax" to revise the timing of the determination of assessed value under certain terms and conditions.
And that bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privilege resolution that has been co-sponsored by all members of council, and I thank them all.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Angelo Cataldi on the anniversary of his 30th year on the air with sports radio 94 WIP and his over 35 years of covering Philadelphia sports.
Thank you, and that will be on today's final passes' calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two non-privilege resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privilege resolution approving the Redevelopment Contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment in Urbana Neul of a portion of the Greenwich Redevelopment Area identified by house number and street address as 522 Mercy Street.
And that will be on next week's final passes' calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees convey conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 25th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will also be on next week's final passes' calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration. Dees convey conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 12th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And it'll be on next week's calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one bill may be heard after the title is read.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 20 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Officers and Employees," Chapter 2700, "Defense and Indemnification," by adding new language to provide protection for disclosures of sexual harassment and immunity for cooperation against sexual harassers, all under certain terms and conditions.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. First, I'd like to say my thanks to Councilwoman Blande Reynolds Brown and the women of council, all of you for your tireless work in bringing more and more attention to the issue of discrimination, unfairness, and harassment in the workplace of women in our society, and particularly, it is shameful when it is our government. And you've done a lot of work to really raise this attention, and you certainly have caught my attention. As an attorney, I've practiced in the area of employment discrimination and have represented women who face gender discrimination and sexual harassment. One of the things that I would like to add through this bill is an ability to reach the highest levels of our government and our agencies where those who condone, participate, or get their subordinates to cover for them, who are aware of harassment, can now be reached. This bill, I think, in the spirit of certainly our new city controller Rebecca Reinhardt with her new hotline for city employees to report sexual harassment, I think, is a way to effectively deal with this issue. The big problem is that when someone has experienced sexual harassment or when they think about supporting a victim of sexual harassment, there are protections and there are remedies, but that happens after the person has been retaliated against. And what they have to weigh is reporting, being fired, and then dealing with this problem as they have no income, health insurance, or pension. This bill makes clear that anyone who retaliates against a victim who reports or a witness that that person will be terminated. Elected officials who are not subject to termination will be reported without discretion to the district attorney's office. This empowers the equal opportunity agencies, the city controller, the district attorney, and the inspector general to take action. It protects victims of sexual harassment from retaliation for reporting offenders. It protects witnesses who report or confirm misconduct from being retaliated against, and it discourages high-level directors or officers from instructing subordinates or supervisors to retaliate against victims or witnesses of sexual harassment by providing the district attorney, city controller, inspector general, and others to make those victims and witnesses immune from termination or retaliation during the course of their investigation. And finally, it provides an avenue to reach the highest level of directors, commissioners, executives, and elected officials by providing the investigating authority the ability to provide a level of immunity to cooperating witnesses. Let me give an example. If there is a high-level executive who is engaged in sexual harassment and is being protected by his board members, if that person then tells a subordinate to fire a victim of sexual harassment, that subordinate may be fired as well under this code section. But if that subordinate then goes to the controller's office and cooperates in being a witness against the executive, that person will be able to be protected from termination. And I think it is important that we address this issue by ensuring that we reach the highest levels so that those who hide in the shadows and condone this type of activity will be exposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and we will now move to our reports on committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee of Legislative Oversight.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Legislative Oversight reports nine bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Legislative Oversight, to which is referred Bill Number 171118, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Safety," by repealing certain provisions of Section 10, 806 relating to construction and reviewing stands. And Bill Number 171119, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Carriers," by repealing certain provisions relating to motor buses. And Bill Number 171120, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Amusement Businesses," by repealing Section 9, 704 relating to motion pictures. And Bill Number 171121, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Service and Other Businesses," by repealing certain provisions related to refuse collection. And Bill Number 171122, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Safety," by repealing certain provisions relating to excavations and obstructions. And Bill Number 171123, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 700 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Amusement Businesses," by repealing Section 9, 708 relating to compulsory vehicle amusement device insurance. And Bill Number 171124, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Service and Other Businesses," by repealing Section 9, 630 relating to sale of used cars. And Bill Number 171126, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10, 800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Safety," by repealing certain provisions relating to police and fire radio broadcasts. And Bill Number 171127, entitled an ordinance repealing Chapter 13, 700 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Garbage Disposal Units." Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the nine bills that were just read to the record by the clerk.
Thank you. Somebody please answer the phone and then turn it off.
I'm gonna start putting y'all out.
Oh, okay. Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the nine bills that were just read in the record by the clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with the suspension of the rule has been deemed to have had a first reading. That bill will be placed on the second reading and final passes' calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes' calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolution bills are being called up for the second reading and final passes' calendars today. Bill Numbers 170967, 180110, 18011170743, 170954, 170716, 171113, 170669, 171082, 171083, 18009, 180014, 180016, and 180076. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Before we consider the resolutions and bills on the final passes' calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. On that podium, there's a device. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when that light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. And thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, if you could read the first name of the individuals on the witness list.
Joe Dennehall commenting on 180111, 171145, and 170675.
Good morning. This is an official decree of the people and remand damis quo warranto as such requires immediate action remedy. I'm sorry. This is an official decree of the people and remand damis quo warranto as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably illegally. I quote Paul Robeson, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic, but end the injustice." You were not elected to rule, the sovereign people, as some officials have repeatedly stated. You were hired as public servants to conduct the people's business, enforce the existing laws, and inquire why existing law is not enforced. I again quote Dr. King, "He who passively accepts evil is as much involved in it as he who perpetuates it." Unenforced laws are causing chaos. As public servants, you cannot violate oath constitutional law without penalty. How can officials deny and defy inalienable and valuable God-given rights? How can agents and agencies steal my home without compensation, due process, Seventh Amendment, trial by jury? How can government pay a contractor upwards of $100 million, mostly federal taxpayer dollars, to build a wall on my stolen home? Why has no official demanded the Attorney General prosecute as required by law? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of codes, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, 26 P.A. CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 14 1330, 14 4056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 24 years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter governed revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to play a fire, and the sovereign people require oath constitutional laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption.
Thank you. Clerk, would you please read our next speaker, please?
Orlando Acosta.
Orlando Acosta. He got a microphone.
Good morning. Yes. Good morning. Right now, I feel glad that a lot of changes are going on within this body of government in terms of everything economically from the people and from residents in the city of Philadelphia. But let's not forget, we have a lot of work to do. But without community being involved in the conversation of it all, and the biblical principle of God itself and God Himself in terms of every solution in government being determined in residence, nothing will stand for the people if God doesn't lead the forefront of it. So let's not forget that before we do anything in government, pass any laws, any statutes, or anything like that, we have to have it in terms of really understanding the principle aspect of everything when it comes down to rental properties or people owning properties. And we have to know and give people the opportunity to follow the Constitution within itself, the laws, and everything like that. Because without that, we're not really standing on much of anything. So that's the first and foremost aspect of anything being run the proper and concise way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk. Would you please breeze our next speaker, please?
Commenting on 171109 and 170743.
Good morning, councilpeople. I'm just here today, one, to stand with the women of council. Could y'all please stand up? A sexual harassment education training is so much needed in this city that when you decide as city council government to make sure that it is ingrained in this city, it is a plus. And I just want to give y'all women applause for making sure that this happens, all of you. Second, since I got three minutes for two things, and I got that, you know, one and a half and one and a half, let me get to the other one. Let me stand here in support of 17043. 17043 is to ensure that the Police Advisory Commission is funded and is on the ballot for members of this city to ensure that something is done. I put forth testimony, but due to my schedule, I couldn't be here in person. So let me say this. Until the city, until the communities of this city is comfortable with how police situations are investigated, until they are secure with those who investigated to come out with a fair and just outcome, until they are insured that when they go to the police to make a complaint, that it's not covered up, that it's not thrown under the rug, that the buddy system in this institution doesn't play a role in reporting incidents with police people, until they are insured that those police officers, now this goes both ways, that are not doing nothing and that people come out and make frivolous complaints against them for just doing their job, which is hard enough, a police advisory commission needs to be in place. But I say this so I can say this on the record. You can have a good, you can have money at a good idea, throw money at a good idea, but if you don't make sure that it is funded with credible and good training of those who are going to be investigated, then you throwing good money at a good idea that just won't work. And my last, before my last 20 seconds is, don't forget to come out to the No Temple Stadium, March the 1st, at George Washington Carver High School at 6:00 PM. If you are in North Philly or anywhere in this city, you need to make sure Temple is not the ones that run this city. We who live in this city runs this city. And in my four seconds, thank you very much.
Yes, I see. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bilal.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, we'll now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, excuse me, if you can read the title of 170967.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Educational Supplement to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to the selection of the members of the Board of Education and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Resolution Number 170967. A copy of the amendment, thank you, has been circulated to all members, and I move for its adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that amendment to 170967, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 170967 has been amended. It will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 180110.
A resolution urging the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to enact House Bill 1187 that would amend Title 75 vehicles of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes, providing for a pilot program for an automated speed enforcement system along US-1 Roosevelt Boulevard.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180110 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 180111.
A resolution urging the United States Congress to reject the Trump administration's plan to make severe cuts to the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 180111 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 170743.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory minimum appropriation to the Police Advisory Commission or any successor body or bodies.
This resolution is a, for the purposes of amending the charter, it requires a two-thirds vote for the record. And I'm assuming we want a roll call. Do we want, okay. Well, unless someone asked for it. Mr. Decker, please read the title, 170743.
A resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory minimum annual appropriation to the Police Advisory Commission or any successor body or bodies.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, oh, we're going to do the roll call? That's what I said. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 14, and the nays are three. Majority of the members, two-thirds of the members voting in the affirmative, the resolution passes. 170743 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 170954.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Educational Supplement to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to the selection of the members of the Board of Education as approved by resolution of the City Council, fixing the date for a special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and make arrangements for the special election.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 170954. A copy of this amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor of the amendment to 170954?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. 170954 has been amended. It will be placed on our final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 170716.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter relating to the operating budget and providing for a mandatory minimum annual appropriation to the Police Advisory Commission or any successor body or bodies.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a adoption, but with a roll call vote.
A second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Thank you, Mr. Decker. You're always making sure I'm on my Ps and Qs. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman
He changed his mind.
Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill Number 170716 passes. Mr. Decker, 171113.
An ordinance amending Chapter 94300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage Theft Complaints to Make Various Wage-Related Violations a Violation of the Code to further provide for determinations by the city regarding wage theft complaints and for appeals of such determinations.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170669.
An ordinance establishing an amended parking regulation change in the vicinity of Chester Avenue and 55th Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title, 171082.
An ordinance authorizing Mr. Amin Tyler, owner and operator of the newsstand located on the southwest corner of 52nd and Spruce Streets, to construct, use, and maintain conduits in, under, and across the southwest corner of 52nd and Spruce Streets.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 171083.
An ordinance establishing a no parking regulation on the 8200 block of Torresdale Avenue east side between the entrances to the Pennyback Trail.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180009.
An ordinance authorizing the Capital Group II to install, own, and maintain a proposed retaining wall and existing fence encroachment at 2000 McKinley Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180014.
An ordinance amending Section 5 of an ordinance, Bill Number 170474A, approved June 27, 2017, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing 1338 Incorporated to Install, Own, and Maintain an Open-Air Sidewalk Cafe at 1338 through 40 South 10th Street by Removing Language Related to the Automated Expiration of the Ordinance Nine Months After the Owner Has Entered Into the Agreement as Required by the Ordinance."
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180016.
An ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate a bicycle lane in the eastbound direction on Ray Street from North 8th Street to North 5th Street, and to remove a travel lane in the eastbound direction on Ray Street from North 8th Street to North 6th Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 180076.
An ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate bicycle lanes in both directions on Island Avenue from Penrose Avenue to Enterprise Avenue, and on Enterprise Avenue for its entire length, and authorizing the removal of travel lanes on both Island Avenue and Enterprise Avenue in the same limits.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neal, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Gunnarina Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 17, and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing the Community College of Philadelphia and its Office of Diversity and Equity for the creation of the Diversity Certificate Program introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing February 2018 as Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Sister Mary Scullion as the Grand Marshal of the 248th Annual Philadelphia St. Patrick's Day Parade introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Overbrook High School basketball star Asia Abram for her outstanding achievements on the Overbrook Girls Basketball Team and for her scoring her 1,000th career point in a game on January 29, 2018, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings examining racial disparities in home lending, also known as modern-day redlining in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Angelo Cataldi on the anniversary of his 30th year on the air with Sports Radio 94 WIP and his over 35 years of covering Philadelphia sports introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Council President, Angelo Cataldi has given almost a lifetime of reporting on sports. And one of the great things about sports is it makes people happy. And Philadelphians in this month have been very, very happy. And we congratulate him, and I move for the adoption of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just want to publicly say, I don't want to be identified as a hypocrite. What happens is, I didn't...
No one has ever done that, Councilman.
Well, they will next week. So, so, next week. So, I didn't think that, I, I didn't think it was a good idea, me personally, to do a charter change for minimum funding. I think it's unprecedented. Maybe it's not, but I'm fine with it's not. I'm sorry.
It's actually not.
It's not. So, I apologize. But anyway, I'm fine with the $500,000 funding. I didn't know about the charter change. And so, I did vote against it, but I see that this is now a method we can use, so I'll be happy to, to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. On behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm just putting my teacher hat on. Educational psychology says sometimes it takes us seven times to hear something before the brain kicks in. So, this is a friendly reminder for my colleagues to please hang around and join us for the 6th Annual City Council Leadership African American History. And a special thank you to my colleagues who'll be able to stay and participate in spoken word. This is a partnership with Art Sanctuary, which we all know is located in Councilman Kenyatta Johnson's district, and today would not be possible but for the Philadelphia Beverage Association. So, I would be remiss not to acknowledge Fran McCoury, Sean King, Danny Grace, a special shout-out to Hajjum Alumium, and all the representatives of the Philadelphia Beverage Association. And then finally, now, to now put my principal hat on, for staff who want to join us, we want your presence, we want your attention, we want your spirit. However, you cannot enjoy the food and libations following this experience if you're not here to enjoy the educational part of this afternoon. So, the food comes after we've had some intellectual stimulation, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. The carrot and the stick. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, you could not have made yourself more clear. Let me just note for the record, Mr. President, I want to take this opportunity to thank our good friends at the Economic Policy Institute. That name is familiar to all of us. I've been fortunate enough to have now developed a 13-year history in working with them, using their research and data to help drive public policy, particularly for working-class residents. And I want to bring our attention to a note that EPI sent out to us regarding, and it is titled, "Black Women Will Be Most Affected By Janus." And on February the 26th, the Supreme Court is scheduled to hear oral arguments in Janus versus AFSMI, a case that could profoundly affect the ability of public sector workers to improve their wages and working conditions. While the outcome of the case will affect about 17 million public sector workers across the country, black women in particular could be hurt by Janus as they make up 17.7% of public sector workers, according to a new EPI snapshot. EPI Celine McNicholas and Janelle Jones, they worked on the data. They also note in this report that if the Supreme Court decides in favor of weakening unions, it will impact the future of democratic decision-making in the workplace and the preservation of good, middle-class jobs in public employment. So, I know we will all pay very close attention. And obviously, as Chair of Council's Committee on Labor and Civil Service, it's something I'll be paying attention to and share whatever information we may come across with all of our colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my colleague Councilwoman Sherrell Parker for bringing up the issue regarding Janus Supreme Court decision. This body, along with the administration, signed on to the Amicus brief supporting AFSMI regarding that Supreme Court case. I know a number of cities around the country are having days of action this Saturday regarding the Janus Supreme Court action, and they will actually be lobbying and agitating in front of the Supreme Court regarding that decision. And I support her for raising our attention on that issue. Also, I want to salute my colleagues, Councilwoman Blana Reynolds Brown and Councilman Curtis Jones, for having a day of American history, as we celebrate that in the month of February. Both for the living legend, as well as the annual African American history celebration that Councilwoman Brown has put on, as well as Councilman Jones in saluting the living legends. And in that spirit, I want to remind colleagues that an email was sent out earlier this week that on February 27th, in the caucus room, we will be celebrating the great Contralto Marion Anderson of Philadelphia on her 121st birthday celebration. We'll be doing that on the 27th in the caucus room from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. This event is being sponsored by my office, as well as the City Representative and the National Marion Anderson Museum, so please come out and listen to great information as we salute Marion Anderson, who, as we all know, is a great, was a great Philadelphian on her 121st birthday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Hey, thank you, Council President. Just two brief announcements. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleague, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, for his leadership in working in partnership with our new District Attorney, Lai Krasner, in ending cash bail for certain low-level offenses which were announced yesterday. So, I thank him for his hard work and dedication of the past year, working on that issue. In that same vein, in the southwest Philadelphia part of my district, I'm going to be hosting a town hall meeting of a young lady who's sponsoring similar legislation in Harrisburg by the name of State Representative Joanna McClintock. We will also have as guest speakers Care Bradford, the first District Public Defender, and District Attorney Lai Krasner, to talk about what ending cash bail will look like here in the City of Philadelphia. And that's at Myers Recreation Center, Tuesday, February 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The next, not so much announcement, but, you know, observation that I came across in terms of where we stand as a country is based upon the recent shooting that took place in Florida. And, you know, this is starting to become a consistent fact of life in America. Not only in urban cities across America, we have to deal with African-American young men killing each other with guns, but also individuals with mental health problems going into schools and shooting our children. And I think we are at a low point in our country based upon the dialogue right now, where some individuals actually thought that some of the children who were survivors of the shooting in a high school were paid actors who went to the State House in Florida to advocate for common sense gun control. I used to work in the State House with the former Chair of the Philadelphia delegation, Sherrell Parker. We sat in the same, we sat in the same section. She was behind me. I sat in front of her. We would talk frequently about how we improved the quality of life here in the city of Philadelphia. And across from us was a nut job by the name of Dell Metcalf, who recently made a statement that it's a conspiracy theory about these children who are survivors of an actual mass school shooting, who was advocating for common sense gun control. And listen, I understand about political debates, right? But we're talking about people losing their lives and people getting up and making these type of statements. And I remain professional, but it reminds me of like, before I became Kenyatta, I was Yat, and how these type of situations, I think, should be dealt with, primarily because you're talking about someone's lives and you're getting up and making these type of statements. I'm like, what if his family was in that same type of predicament, or these same nut job newscasters? If their families and their children were in the same type of predicaments, would you still hear the same type of rhetoric? And so, we got to do better. I mean, as a country, I think right now, you know, if we don't do a better job in this midterm election moving forward, we might be in a rocket ship to hell. Because at the end of the day, some of the debates that are going on aren't healthy for our country. And so, I know it's a national issue, but I wanted to speak on that primarily because it affects us all, you know? And no one wants to see any children losing their life as relates to someone picking up a gun and murdering them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Council President. And I just want to thank my colleagues as well. I did want to add in that there will be, as many of us know already, but we hope that many people will turn out for the Rally for Workers on Thomas Paine Plaza on Saturday, this coming Saturday, the 24th, to honor the Janus decision and to recognize the importance of the upcoming Janus decision and also to honor workers today. I also want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Jones, for the great work that she did, not only on cash bail, but on the Just Cause Eviction work and the continued commitment that the city has to address, taking a serious look at the needs for 40% of our residents who are tenants in the city. And finally, you know, I do want us to be very mindful that while my council colleague, Councilman Johnson, made it very clear that what happened at that school was, most recently in the news, what happens on the streets of Philadelphia and in our state is happening all too frequently. This issue does hit home. We have a bill currently in the Pennsylvania Legislature that has already made its way through the Senate, that has advocated for arming school staff with guns and promotes in a reckless manner the idea that somehow somebody could have stopped a mad, you know, someone who was really unfit with an assault rifle and a weapon of mass destruction. So, I hope that all of us can recognize how important it is for us to take this on as an issue within our own state legislature. Those issues are timely now. They're moving now. We can play a role now as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes our speeches today. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 1, 2018, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 1, 2018, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.